Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, time is now six P M. Regular meeting in the City Council of City Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance to Valentine, which begins with the twenty eighth.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full call please.
Benado.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Grigo. Here.
Lopez. Here.
Mitte.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Grigo.
Here. Have a proclamation tonight, do we have someone here from the forestry board that could accept this?
I will take it for them as their liaison.
Yes, you're right.
Yes.
Okay, Officer of the Mayor, proclamation for Arbor Day, April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day may be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I feel the Pledge of Allegiance Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby proclaim April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen as Arbor Day. In the City of Trinidad, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And further urge citizens to participate in the local Arbor Day activities. A witness whereof I have here in to sit my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affected. Mayor Philip T. Rico. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
All right.
No pictures, I just. Thank you. Don't give that to that board.
All right, thank you. Item number two approved of the agenda, do we have any changes? Motion please.
I move to the appreciation.
Okay.
Second.
Call vote please.
Benado.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grigo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Grigo.
Yes. Item three, three A, Monumental Lake update. Mr. Montag.
Good evening, City Council. Here for an update. First off by saying that we're excited to get back to Monumental Lake. It's about that time of year, usually about four to six weeks before the opening is about when we're going to probably be up there. So the time which is probably going to be this weekend. So from about now on, we've been working every day for a long time. End of the season is going to be at the end of September this year. So we'll go through the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, I don't remember what day that is, the Sunday in September. Our media representation has been working very well for us. Over this last Friday, Saturday and Sunday, our website was hit fifteen hundred and eighty-seven times. So now that the weather's getting a little warmer, people are thinking more about camping. We've got a lot of reservations for the Fourth of July, we're not completely fooled, but we're nearly there, same with Memorial Day as well. As far as jobs go, we run anywhere between eighteen and twenty-three people to run the lake. I've got thirteen returning right now, so we're in pretty good shape on that end. It's not like we have to start from square one. It's nice to have people come back to you because they know what's expected of them and how the resort's run. We'll be moving equipment to the lake here in the next two or three weeks. We'll be stocking the restaurant and working on the grounds and just lots of different things. We work with Gil, who is an employee of yours, to get the water turned on at Monumental Lake and everything flushed and make sure no leaks anywhere and so forth and so on. That's a cumbersome type situation. Probably about three weeks ago, was a pretty major windstorm that went through there and broke several of the large trees around. So we'll be cleaning up trees that are snapped and broken. None that I could see were impeding on vehicle traffic or anything like that. We did have two broken windows, one in the restaurant and one in one of the cabins. But it was really hell. As far as, we're going to have, we had planned to do four weddings at Monumental Lake this year. One of them has opted to step out of that, so we're going to have three. I also just got word this afternoon that we'll have the O'Reilly Convention again this year. So what O'Reilly does, O'Reilly out of parts, they take the northern part of New Mexico and southern part of Colorado and they combine the two districts and they'll go to different places. They came to Monumental Lake last year and they enjoyed it so much they want to come back. So it'll be a weekend in August that the O'Reilly Convention will happen. We're proud to say we're supporting the Trinidad Youth Club. We'll be buying pizzas from them this year to sell at Monumental Lake in the restaurant and in the bar. Also been working with Gil on some updates that need to happen at the restaurant. There's backflow prevention devices that need to be put into the restaurant and also a drain that the health inspectors kind of didn't like. It was, you're supposed to have an open system, not a closed system or something like this. So we're getting that taken care of. I think there were two or three or four plumbers looking at the project. And so we'll be going on that pretty quick, as soon as that gets going. New additions this year, we're going to go ahead and do the ice cream parlor right there at the store by the shore, so we'll be serving ice cream to our guests. Hopefully this year we'll be able to have fires in the fire pits. It's at stage one right now, which does say in a closed pit you can have a fire. So we're looking forward to having to be, have fires this year and also to sell wood. And lastly, we're just constantly working on the website, that really worked good for us this year. We really tried to turn that from what it used to be to what it is now. And it used to be that you used to have to call in, do all of your reservations and get all the information. It used to, literally last year we filled thousands and thousands of calls. This year we've really been trying to streamline people to the website. You can go to the website, you can get all the information you want about Monumental Lake. You can book your stay and you can do it at six o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the morning or noon or for your break or whatever the case may be. But we've set it up and we're constantly changing the website. We're adding, because naturally you can't get it all right the first time, but that's something that we work on all the time is trying to perfect that website because that's where we're streamlining everybody to go. Any questions?
Yes, any questions? You say you have thirteen employees, which ones are you missing? What job function, do you have cooks?
I've got both of my cooks and we're going to need some waitress staff and we're needing maintenance people and we're needing housekeeping. The bar's taking care of the office. I might bring one more in the office.
Okay, what's your status with the bathhouse?
The bathhouse is kind of sick right now, it's just waiting to be finished up. I believe the propane needs to be connected and hooked up and that's about where we are. I haven't been up there in about, I was there last Saturday, not this last Saturday, I didn't go this weekend, but I was up the week before and it was still kind of sick about the way it was.
Do you have any status, any update on that?
Yeah, Tom has in his report.
Okay.
All right.
We, I went, drove by the main entrance and it is a mess, the mud and everything, are you going to grade that right away?
Oh yeah, yeah, that's something we definitely want to do.
You can't even travel over it.
As soon as that, as soon as that snow comes off there. And by the way, we pushed snow this year, wow, I pushed a lot of snow. A lot of snow nearly, nearly every week, like from December to very recently. But yes ma'am, to answer your question, we'll be grading roads and getting roads all back up in shape and yes ma'am.
Good. That's it.
Do you, excuse me, do you feel like your numbers last year were along lines with your projections of where you were hoping to be? So that way you can be better for this coming year and add on and add on every further year in your contract?
Yes sir, I believe, I believe we hit our numbers pretty well. I, we might have been a little bit low, but I really feel going into the second year, you don't have those first year blues and I know what to expect now. I know, I just know a lot more. You can sit and you can think about things and think about them and think about them. I thought about this for months and months and months. But until you actually get in there and do it, you really don't know what's going on. So this year we'll be much better prepared for different situations.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like a good report. Where, if you compare where you are right now with what things compared to where you were this time last year?
Yes ma'am.
Did you say you're way up?
I believe we're ahead, I believe we're ahead by quite a bit, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am, and I do, I believe it's all due to the website. Again, people can, if people are thinking about something, what was happening to me a lot is people were calling. All the information, they do everything they need to do and they say, well, I need to talk to my husband or I need to talk to my wife. So then they call back and, my kids are coming, let me talk. So you'd end up fielding two or three or four calls. And so it took a lot, a lot of time to do that sort of thing. And so now that the website's there, they can kind of do it on their own and then we're not having to face a lot of those kind of situations.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sure with all the moisture we've got, no fires going on, that it should be a much better year. We got an agreement worked out, great, correct, to have it stocked? Do we know where we're at on that, when the lake will be stocked, is that a play a big part?
I haven't heard, the game warden oversees that. And I haven't heard when to do it the first time.
You were aware we worked out a deal on getting the lake stocked, right?
Yes sir.
Well, I think that'll be beneficial and good information for your website.
Yes sir.
Well, the thing is, we've always done that and it's a long time contract, it goes back many, many years. But for some reason it wasn't renewed after eleven, nobody caught it till last year or year and a half.
So hopefully we'll get some more fish in there pretty soon, they can start growing and we'll be having a really good year.
Thank you sir.
Well, I've known brought Mr. Montag on for a long time. I gave him the job when I was still in my business. His work ethic then proved to me that I was worth acting for now. He was a hustler, he done good, and when things had to be done, I didn't have to tell him that we had done it. Point is that I have all the faith in Brian, I think he's doing an excellent job and I know in the future he'll do better.
Thank you sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you. The, the door, all right. Well done.
You forgot the name, Brian.
I kind of like to say. I'm the last one to do it.
All right.
You know, you were saying that you're trying to push more people toward online registration. Are you, are we still working with those that do not have a computer to?
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, you bet, you bet, yeah, absolutely.
And I know, and I think for your information, Rusty, I think that there was a report that was given, and I saw that, of the number of fish, of how it's been stocked in the years. And every year they've increased it from what I saw. It's been increased over and more and more and more, so hopefully they'll continue to do that, to increase this. Because I know that was the big question, you know, last year, about the stocking capability. And I know that you and the Stowall Fire Department, because of the lateness, and I sent you that email a while back. And like I mentioned, I hope that at the end of the year, this year, that you will get with Emberti on to try to plan for the fishing tournament for next year. Hopefully that, it sounds like both you and them were in agreement to do that, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I mean, we, you know, we met with the Stowall Fire Department Auxiliary and tried to plan a fishing tournament for this year and they declined, is basically what it was. And so it wasn't on us, it was, they declined to do it. So, and I believe you're right, I think it was for time reasons.
That's what they, that's what they told me.
Do you remember when we did that meeting, was it February, January, February, it was pretty early on.
It was pretty early on and I think what it is, is by the time they get their message out to the people actively who've come, it was a little late to, I guess, to get the information out. And that's, that's what I understood, so.
Yeah, that's very impressive.
That's what I understand.
Sure.
Hopefully going forward next year that we make it work.
All right, sounds great.
Good luck this season.
Thank you sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item three B, utility project update. Ron Miller, the meeting manager and members of council. So in no particular order, I'm just going to go through some of the major projects we have going on and stop me, ask questions whenever. First one is at North Lake Dam. Two years ago, we had a video of our intake pipes in the levels of the dam. Found them to be needing some repair. So our consulting engineer did several iterations of what we do. Besides draining the darn thing and digging them up and replacing them. They came up with a system of putting HDP pipe, basically similar to, somewhat similar to the slip lining we're trying to do up here, but it's actually thick wall pipe that they run through a compressor. It compresses, the rollers compress it down and timing to get it through the pipe and in place. It expands back to its natural thing. They've done this in several places. They went through extensive design review with the state dam inspector and they have finally approved it and our consultant is working with inland marine, the divers who have to actually go down and do this. So that should be out for your approval soon. It's been a budgeted item for two years now, we finally got state approval and it was an extensive review on their part to make sure that everything goes good with that.
When that happens, will they have to shut the water off probably going to that inlet?
There's, there's different levels of release, so when they're doing one, we'll use the other. It's all valved and we replaced all the valving. We replaced all the platforms in the tower to get to those, so, yes ma'am.
Mr. Valentine, how come this wasn't replaced when the valves were replaced?
It's part of the review process, so.
I mean, that, Colin Stans would say, you know, to replace that, replace the pipes before you replace the valves.
Yeah, that we need the valves replaced right away and the pipes, we would have to, if you want to do it the old fashioned way, you have to drain the lake to dig them up, to replace them. So that's where the design considerations took so long to get that done.
It was my understanding that when those gates, when those valves were put in, that everything was A O K or on that, on that, get the leak.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's the video.
That's been a while back, you know.
Yeah, the video done, I believe it was two years ago, showed that those pipes, they're not failing, but they're, you know, need to take care of it. And this is the solution the engineer came up with.
So the piping is going to go basically from the dam to the water treatment facility?
No, no, this is, so you have your dam structure and the water's on this side and there's a pipe that goes through to that tower where the valving is. So that pipe that's in the, in the earth and dam, it takes the water through and then out to the backside, that pipe.
Okay, so it doesn't run all the way down that county road or wherever, to that facility up there?
That's another one that will have to be replaced eventually, but that so far is holding up.
How long is that section, that of total replacement for this particular item?
For this item?
Hundred feet?
Yeah, it's a little more, I think it's a hundred and sixty at the base. I have.
Okay.
Good job, thank you.
Sticking with water, we've been talking about the Santa Fe Trail water line for a while now. We've been through several iterations of design. We wanted to phase it in two phases. Number one, the water line was put in, I don't know when, before the highway went through. So right where it crosses the highway from Old Sopers Road and comes across toward the golf course, that line is over fifteen, twenty foot deep in there. It was in place before the fill went in for the highway, so they built up on it. So we added that as a phase and said, let's get that out of there. Then it goes up and over the golf course and comes back down onto Van Buren. We potholed that whole line in several locations and found that the condition of that pipe is amazingly pristine. It's like brand new. I mean, you could rub it off, you know, there's, I don't know if you've ever seen a buried metal line that's corroded and, you know, it's been in the ground. This one is not, it's in excellent shape, I don't see a reason to mess with it. So we took that section out, so we have phase one where we're going to come up Old Sopers Road, catch it there, come down that frontage road that leads to Old Sopers, do a directional bore casing under the highway to get to the other side. The original alignment is about a four hundred and fifty foot bore. The new alignment is about a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty. So we're going with that design. Through that process, we had to get C dot's approval. We've got the preliminary okay on that, the engineer, they said, yes, we're good with it, we just need a few details. So we're working through that. Where it comes up and over the golf course and we leave that alone and we come down and it goes through the parking lot of the Best Western, what's it called?
Days Inn.
Days Inn, thank you. Right there, we've had, we've had major, major leaks in that area, you know, and it's, it's deep there also. So we're going to take it from, where it comes down and go down the old on-ramp that they abandoned, that C dot abandoned, come down past to get it away from the hotel and everything and then come up Adam Road to the pump station. That's been approved by C dot preliminarily also. So this is the same line that we're replacing on Second Street. So we don't want to do those both at the same time, we're trying to tie them. So this one should be coming out, I'd say the design is ninety-five percent. We need to file a review and then we'll be bidding that out.
With that, I thought we had already approved that.
We approved the design and then the second phase designed to do the other. So we've, the design engineering has been approved, not the actual construction installation.
Might be with that, excuse me, Mr. President, might be with that line being so deep, does the state special backhoes and stuff that has to go that deep? I know like our, our backhoe and stuff won't go down that new source, look to the, whoever made that bid or whatever.
Yeah, they'll, they'll definitely have the bigger machines to track those and, yes. Where, and part of the issue is, right now where it's at, something happens, we're not getting to it.
Yeah, you cannot.
It's too deep. So we're going to, that's the redesign and we won't go as deep as it is there.
What's the usual depth on a number line like that, Mike?
We had a, we try to keep it five foot there and down there, just, yeah. Our modern lines? Yeah. Okay. So with all that design, we had a meeting internally and Tom will probably speak to it a little more. Where it comes down, it comes down right from the house and then heads up over the hill on Washington slash Second Court, makes a turn there. Where it goes down from that intersection down, there's a four inch line that comes down to feed the Ramonian.
Yeah, the old timey.
So we've been looking at that section of Santa Fe Trail for a while. I think it was even Michelle who said, wow, what's going on there? I started driving, so as part of a project, we want to do that stretch of Santa Fe Trail. Well, with that, we're going to replace that water line. Because state did it from Main Street up to where the concrete dam is here at First Street and we're going to be doing it there and we're going to widely leave that section in there, so we're going to do that. That's, that's not a lot of design, that's just getting the alignment done in with the whole street design. The water infrastructure on Second Street, we've made our final tie-ins to the twenty-four inch on both ends. We're, we're on new line, all the ties are in, all the services are to the new line. We've drained the old line. All that's left now is the street patched back and they're, they're doing that as they can there. It was, was a longer project, but boy, when you dig up in an old town, you find some things like, what's that? Ooh. You call every department in and everybody's scratching their heads and then somebody says, well, let's drill it and see if something comes out. So, but there's, there's a lot of old infrastructure under there that's been abandoned. We had the whole manufactured gas lines, steam lines, just a lot of stuff that slows you down when you're digging and you find something and you say, well, do I rip this up? Wait a minute, we're not sure yet, so. But they're, they'll be buttoning that all up here, streetwise, within a couple of weeks. The sewer slip lining project, we had the slip line, we had them come in and they cleaned and videoed all the lines and they started to do some of the slip lining, but in there, as they analyzed each video of each segment of the line, they found, you know, collapsed, misaligned joints on old clay tile over the years that have sunk. We found one where somebody drilled directional bore right through the middle of the pipe, so we couldn't slip line it because there's something in there that we didn't know what it was. Certain things like that, so we suspended the slip lining until we could do the point repair. So there's, if you noticed anywhere in Old Town up here, there's a hole here and then we're over here, we're digging a hole and then we're up here digging a hole. It's, it's back to Old Town, it's dirt roads.
In other words, it looks like a gopher field.
Exactly. So we've got, we identified over sixty-five issues that had to be addressed. Some of them will be addressed with the change order to the slip lining people who have. They've got taps that have intruded into the mains. The old timers, they just cut a hole in the old clay tile and stuck the thing in there cemented around it while, you know, the tap, the pipe is sticking in there. Well, they have a robot that can go in there and actually trim all that out. So we're going to have them do that and slip line those, so. We have one more point repair that's on Adamus Street, that'll be shut down. We actually have to place a manhole. Can't slip line it because as they're cambering, it goes down and then the pipe takes a ninety and goes somewhere. They don't know where, we come up, we can't find it. So we're, we're going to dig that up, put a manhole in so we can slip line that section.
Where's that?
Right here on Adamus End, that was a. Right here on Anima's end, that was a third, second, third, thank you, third street.
I have a question for you real quick.
You may.
Along Second Street, you've been implementing new, uh, fire hydrants, I've noticed, almost on every block, like there's one on Chestnut, there was one on Wall or Maple. Where there's other ones like on Anima's Street here, you had an old one and you put in a new one. Will we be disregarding those other ones and send them to the scrapyard or something like that?
Yes, yes, so as part of the, the whole, uh, sequencing of getting that, we have, if you ever, if you notice, some of them had bags over them, black bags. They're in place, but they're not active to let the fire department know, don't hook to that one, hook to this one. So now part of the process after we've got everything over, the twenty-four inch is now dead, we've gotta go back and take out the old fire hydrants.
Okay.
So, yes.
I have a question. So you're having such a hard time finding, finding all the pipes and where they were. Is the city going and, uh, correcting or making a correct record of what you're doing so in future generations we won't have that problem?
That, that is correct. Um, just a bit of history for, for every service, for everything that happens out there. We have the plumbers, whoever, call engineering, we go out, take measurements and ties and we bring them back in and put them on maps. In, in the eighties, in Ramon Inn and Best Western there. You may recall, the city hall burned down.
Right.
Lost a lot of records. We have, uh, luckily, if you've seen our water and sewer and gas maps, they're water damaged and they're charred on the heads and stuff, we're able to save some of those. We have no records of any storm sewer lines. So, you know, we just go out and do that. But as part of every project and as part of the contractor getting his payment, his monthly drop or whatever he's done, we require to pay some of that as-built charge of what they're putting in the ground, so.
As you do these, uh, new plans, I know you're probably storing them here physically, but are you also storing them off-site somewhere else so that in the case we have a catastrophic, catastrophic event like happened in the eighties, that there's a secondary source to get that information?
Yeah, well, not, not as well as we should. We have some in my office and we have some next door, so, I mean, copies next door, the, the paper copies, but everything we do now is digital and it's on, on the server and that's backed up and, um, that, that goes to the D E, so.
There's multiple sets of redundancy?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
What are all these surprises and hiccups that add into the budget for this project?
You know, surprisingly, so far, um, the, well, I'll step back a minute. On the sewer slip lining, the slip lining people wanted us to do a change order for three hundred, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. They said, no, we can't really sign a change order that big.
That was for?
So, that was for the point repair, so we went out to bid. Um, that ended up being, well, it was like round numbers, a hundred and forty thousand. We've had a few issues, uh, and then if you notice a big hole in Commercial Street on that point repair, that it just kept caving in and we lost all the streets, so that cost a little more, but, um. Overall, the, the project is coming within budget. I mean, they're, the contractor is holding to their, uh, unit price bids. Uh, we're putting more linear feet, so we're, we're upping the budget a bit here and there. But they're holding to the unit price. They bid so much per foot, if they put in ten foot, we'll pay them for that. If they put in twenty, we'll pay them for that. The, uh, time that it's taken, it's added time to the project and, and we're working with contractor and they understand and there, there may be some discussion of liquidated damages on it, but all in all, they, they've been a good contractor, bid on it as much as they could. If you recall, I came to U N S because of the magnitude of the project, we wanted to have our engineering firm have a representative onsite. Well, that little bit of expense, because it's went longer, but he's out there and we're gonna discuss that.
And I was trying to follow you in my mind as you were describing all the distances and directions it would go. We didn't get anywhere near the gusher in front of the fire department, or did we? And I didn't follow it. It just happened? Or that's another surprise?
That, that was a, that was a, that's a life in a...
A day in the life of the public works guy?
A whole public works water department employee, we had a break.
Okay.
A bean break that it just severed the line, just popped the line. That line is fed from the pump house that pumps the water up to the tank. But that pressure on that is about two hundred P S I.
Really?
And that line was put in, who the fuck, in the eighties, seventies, somewhere in there. It's held up and, I don't know, something, something hammered the line, something happened and it severed the line and so they were able to cut, cut that.
It just seemed like they just never asked. That's the way it goes.
Yeah.
Mike, are we trace lining everything so we can locate better?
Yes.
I know talking with the guys in the sewer department, since we're going through our own plumbing issues right now, they asked us to, and so we're trace lining everything and drawing maps also, so we will have trace lines so we can at least locate know where it's at.
Yeah.
We, we had a problem recently because of doing that. Somebody wired a house and wired the ground wrong and it melted the wire into the pipe.
What's the chances of that happening?
Yeah, that's, that's the first, any of us have ever heard of that. Something, you know, people ground their electric to their cold water line and, I mean, that's cold, you can do that.
Right.
Well, somehow, something happened. Don't know. But it sent a charge down their service line to our, we tie our tracer wire to their service so we could, and follow our line. Well, I've got pictures, it, it burned into the pipe until, yeah.
Mike, I've got a question.
Yes.
Where do we stand on the, on electricity metering?
Okay, that's, that's coming up, I'll get there.
Okay.
As part of the, the whole, just to wrap up the water infrastructure and the sewer slip lining being as it, it's taken quite a while, we were running up against the deadline for our doligret. We filed for an extension and got it to the end of this year, December of twenty nineteen, so we're, we're good there too, so. Meter replacement, so, um, Johnson Controls was here several times, right? Part of the meter replacement was getting a good audit. On all our sizes of meters and everything, through the years, we've, we've lost records with some on the fire. We've got, so in order to get an accurate count and an accurate size of every meter, they're, they started this audit. It was, it's taken them a little longer than they thought it would, but they're, they've got over eleven thousand. We've got twelve thousand seven hundred meters, water, sewer, gas meters. They're, they were at eleven thousand the last we spoke. Part of the, I mean, they're almost complete with the electric and the gas. The water is hard because those are the meters that have to get, they have to get inside houses. So they're having to schedule appointments and work around people's appointments on those.
Is that, is that, excuse me, Mike, is that part of like PMI, I see?
Yes.
Going around town. Matter of fact, the gentleman was across the street where I live and I went over there to talk to him. And, uh, I happened to notice that he had to check the meters and so.
Sure.
He came over, really nice polite gentleman, yeah. And he came over and he looked at the, the, the meter that, you know, the street put in and stuff like that, he wrote things down, but, yeah, you know, and then he came over to my rental house and checked that one too, uh, PMI.
Professional meter installer.
Okay. And that's what John told me.
Yep.
I mean, for a living.
I'm kidding, so, they're, they, uh, Johnson Controls contracted them.
Mike, I'm curious, because it affects our possible obligations in net metering. Are we gonna be over five thousand electricity meters?
No.
Because I think the last estimate I saw was about forty-six hundred.
Yes, that's where we're hovering around.
Yeah, we don't have to grow too much before we...
Yeah, we're bumping up against it, but with these new meters, uh, we went through a, a whole, uh, three-hour online session with them, with a conference call on all, what do we want programmed in these meters? They are, there's so many options and availabilities and, and in the future, it's just a adjustment in the computer to take different readings from them, so, yeah. So we're, we're almost done with the audit. This week, uh, Census, who is doing the AMI radio read system, is going to be installing a radio tower on top of Simpson's Rest on the Trinidad side and one on the Allenale Tank. They've done what's called a propagation study on, on the area and they think they'll get full coverage of Trinidad and surrounding areas with those two. So they'll be installing those, testing those, uh, this week. As we spoke with the electric meter company, they're going to send out twelve to fifteen meters and place them throughout the town and start bouncing signals to see, to get, make sure they're in communication with the tower and into the head end, which is us. The electric meters will not take that long to install. It's basically plug and play, pull the meter, put the new one in. Uh, so those, once they test those fifteen, those will be ordered and that, that order shouldn't be too much. The first, too long, the first batch of water meters have been ordered and they're saying they're, they've got a delivery date of mid-May. Uh, once they start getting those meters, they're gonna start deploying in line to do the installs. The plan of attack is to do it in, um, in routes. You know, our meter readers have certain routes set up and we wanna do those routes so that we, our meter readers will continue to read. And once we get a route done and established and reading correctly, a couple of months of radio reads and we feel good about it, then they can move on and the phase of all-in, all the routes, there's forty-two routes in the city. That was electric, water, gas. You have an item on your agenda tonight. I don't know if you recall the PMI, I mean, JCI, Johnson Controls, through the whole process, we're, we're gonna do all the meters and because of the liabilities with having to be OQ certified on our system and the Public Utilities Commission overseeing everything, they didn't wanna take on those liabilities, so we pulled the gas meter install away from them. They're still going to put the gas meter, it's called an ERT, there's all kinds of acronyms, I don't know what that means, right now. Electrical Radio Transmitter, how's that?
That sounds good.
Something, something like that. Anyway, they're, they'll take the face off of the newer meters we have in the system, put this on there and calibrate it and then it'll start sending signals. You can still go to the meter and visually see the read, but it's the one doing the transmitting. The meters that need to be replaced, I had to go out for a request for proposal to companies to do this. PMI was one that submitted a proposal and another one, uh, MGP Engineering out of Houston, submitted another proposal. They were pretty far apart. I will bring, bring those forward, I don't wanna labor you with that, but go ahead.
I have just a very simple question. And it dawned on me the other day, because I was going through a section of town that has, has a lot of vacant houses on it. So if there aren't a utility customer now, what happens after the initial meters are changed out? What happens to these houses if they come back online after?
Right, so as part of the, the whole process, we have inactive meters and Johnson Controls took a, a download of all our, uh, customers at one point in time. Some of them were inactive then, they're active now. They're active now as they're doing the audit, they're inactive, you know, they're, so we, we ask them through that year of time if we have people to turn active, then they'll come in and, and get them upgraded. Otherwise, we'll, at the end, we'll have an inventory of meters. As people come in to turn their utilities on, we'll go install a new meter. Uh, we'll be trained on how to, uh, configure to, to the system.
So when we do these transitions, say if like the meters are currently spinning and we know where they were the previous month to the new month, uh, what is the process that they have for reading accurately so that way we don't skip a beat in terms of our billing?
Exactly right, so they've created their data person, creating algorithms and, uh, whole programs, macros, I don't know. But what they're doing is the, the meter installer will walk up to the meter, they'll take a picture of the meter, of the read, get a GPS coordinate of it, um, for good mapping. And then that'll be plugged in to the system as, and we have the old read, we have up to current, let's say it's fifteen days. We have there, then we put the new meter in and that's reading on this system. And then, so it starts at zero, at the end, when it reads it, the, the month, in fifteen more days, get that read. We add those two together and, so, yeah, we, we won't, in theory, it's all gonna work, just grab and we'll be good. You know, so when we exceed the number of meters we're purchasing now in a few years.
And let's say we have new residences, uh, do we have to call them back for installation or is it something else?
No, no, it's something we'll be trained on, that's part of the whole program is our meter techs will be trained on and have actual laptops when they go and they'll, the meter will talk to the laptop, it'll talk to, talk to the tower, it'll talk to the head end and we'll get it configured and it'll start reading as soon as they put it in.
Is there a limit on, let's say, we have how many meters, we have, let's say, twelve thousand?
Right.
I think for some bloody reason, all of a sudden we grow to, you know, more. And through the, you know, like computer, all computer systems, you have a program and you pay up to a number of individuals.
We all have a system though.
Okay, so that won't affect it at all.
All these systems are scalable. They're the same system pretty much as being used in Colorado Springs.
So we may, if they expand out Cougar Canyon, just in, in the propagation study didn't get those, we may put another radio tower up over there, so, yeah.
One other thing that doesn't catch, I just saw an email from somebody today. They had a resident who was gone from their house for a little bit, then a water line broke in the house and went through seventeen thousand gallons in one. This system would notify us when that's happened.
Yeah.
So we can stop maybe a thousand instead of seventy thousand.
I've, I've seen that happen before in winter time.
Yeah, it's pretty easy when you have a baseball.
It's hyped and then falls out and nobody knows.
Now, there was a family, this is about twenty, twenty, thirty years ago, that a family left and it was an exceedingly cold winter, uh, time period. And they left and water line broke and they came back, you know, five, six hours later and their baseball was all swimming pool swimming. So it doesn't take long?
No, it doesn't, no.
But this system, it, it'll, it reads regularly, so it'll be able to tell us if something's going wrong.
The, uh, gas meters, since we took them, we're, we're done, I went out for the RFP for the gas meters. Uh, the book, uh, responders to my request for a proposal put in the cost to supply the gas meters. In talking to the supplier for our region, um, those, uh, it's cheaper for us to purchase, so I contacted the preferred, uh, proposal. Asked them, can you give us revised numbers if we purchase the meters? They said, sure, and it came in. They said sure and it came in much lower, much lower. You'll see, I'm going to present that for your approval to buy the meters tonight, but... Part of the problem is we went out for a grant and went for a grant and was successful with DOLA to replace the gas meters. We got the award letter, but as you know, with DOLA, you can't do anything until you have some contract with them. You can't just move on the award letter. They don't like you doing that and they specifically stated in their letter. Greg was able to contact Clay Brown with DOLA and ask, okay, these gas meters are thirty to forty weeks out from time of order to time of receipt. We want to move on that. He said, as long as we're spending our portion of the batch, he's okay with it. Do not spend DOLA's portion until you have a contract. So, that's part of tonight's discussion, I just wanted to, I mean, that's a, lead time is tremendous on these meters. Anyway. I, that pretty much, I don't know if there's any questions. I know we've been getting a lot of calls on the meters, it's new technology and people are concerned with radio frequencies and we've kind of dispelled that pretty much. There is an option where you can opt out, and I'm considering, other communities have done it, larger communities, whereby you can opt out and not have this meter in your house, but it's going to cost you because we still have to roll the truck, have to have that meter read or go out there. So, I'm going to bring that forward to you for your consideration, but I don't know if anybody's contacted you as far as health concerns and everything, it's.
There was something on social media.
I do have one question in a totally separate sense. Have you heard anything from BNSF on that sewer line? Okay, that's down here, that's another major project, let's jump there, thanks. It's a segue. I saw Pete Rick, I was last Friday, a comedian, and he was asking about this. Yeah, and from his, he suggested the language I sent to him from that. I sent him that language and they came back and said, we, they didn't give us a license or, you know, permission yet. They said, your alignment is approved, we're still looking through other issues. So, along those lines. La Porta is coming up, you know, and they're wanting to move forward and we need to do that. So, what I've done is I've contacted our engineer, the design, the overall, said, okay, can we just do that segment that's in La Porta and do phase two in the future? They, once we get the NSF approval, we get on their line, we need their approval. They've said they like the alignment, kind of moving forward with that. So, what we've done, and I don't know, I think in your memo to City Council, Greg applied for another DOLA grant for that phase two, not for anything in La Porta because we need to move on that here short to get that, so, because that's the deepest utility. We got to get that in first before we can do anything above, so. With that being said, the engineer's working on splitting into two drawings, two bid sets for us. BNSF approval, I submitted in May of twenty eighteen. And we, I pushed hard, pushed hard, finally got a representative from the Denver office come down and at least look at the, and all she could say is, I'll take that back to my supervisor, I'll take that back to my supervisor. So, we didn't get somebody here that says that had to be afforded the segment. She's taking it back. We are doing a, I am doing a water model through the La Porta area for all that's anticipated to make sure we put in the right size of line for that development in the future. That's in process, almost done. We have a meeting with the La Porta folks Thursday, so that's just all moving. It's part of the whole review process. Those are some of the bigger ones. Just with that, we've got some really major projects going on, the hospital. We did some utility extensions up there and approved those and they got those in. They're working through their issues, I think they're done and have a meeting now to tear down that wing. I don't want to report on what they're doing, but we get tied up in all that, so that's part of what's going on there. Space crate, it's another one. They're doing that special stream. There's going to be some utility upgrades, they need a bigger transformer for electrical, they need a gas lane where it comes in now, they want to move it. Got a kind of a request for information on why don't you use what's there. Anyway, we're working through that. McDonald's, I don't know if you've seen that, no Big Macs for a while until August, I guess. They're redoing the whole site, they're severing utilities, everything. They're not using any of the existing, they're cutting it all out, building new and plumbing new, so.
Just that grad tone did, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Something that you may have noticed, may have got calls on, we have a little bit of a sewer issue on commercial. Greg included it into memo to you. One of the shops there had sewer issues and if they're having problems, we've done. We did all that work in commercial, all our maps, it was probably got burnt. All our maps show one line in that second, segment of commercial. All of our investigation, running cameras, they're not coming out in the manholes that we thought they were. Now, we have three lines in commercial. The plumber slash contractor wanted to tear into Commercial Street. He called and said, you know what, I'm going to wait till after Easter, which is, Easter Saturday is also April twentieth.
It's going to be a little busy.
It'll be a little busy down there and we didn't want to close down their business right on, at that time, so. They're good with that, but following the next week, we'll be shutting down Commercial and having an open trench. We thought, we thought we were good with Commercial, but there we go. How long do you anticipate that closure to be? A week. They're going to get in there, they're going to fix it. We've figured out a way that they, rather than take them from their service all the way down twelve feet to where the main is, I'm going to let them tie in, it's not conventional, but I'm going to let them tie direct into the manhole about six, seven foot deep and just dump it in, straight into the manhole just because of the alignment where they're at. They should get in there, that should take a day. He said he was good, the contractor said, I'm going to stay there until that's hooked up. I don't want to be in there either. And then the backfill, pour the concrete back. I want them to use higher concrete so that it cures faster and it reaches strength and then they'll put the bricks, a week is what we're anticipating. Hopefully sooner, but that's that. And then, just a side note, Steve did an article in The Chronicle. We knocked a bid, given quotes for a new flagpole on Simpson's Rest. I'm looking for them, they're, each company I've contacted, the pole is quarter inch thick aluminum, they're all quoting that, I said, it's not working for us. We went through two, not we, the outs actually went through two. So, we want to help out. I'm looking for at least three eights to put up there and hopefully pass on. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members Council.
That was IBC by the way, Public Works Project.
I have printouts of the sheet, I don't know which of all you were included in your packets.
Let me have a copy of that sheet.
You have that, okay, great. I want to, it's pretty, it's like one of these, yeah. And I had to put the lines on so I could read them.
Sure.
It's just easier to explain.
Thank you, sir.
I will try to be brief but thorough. I have, if you guys have any questions or you want to see something, have your proper plan.
Thank you.
Hopefully you don't have my notes on or my scribbles on.
Thank you.
Okay. If you don't mind, we'll just start right at the top and go down through them. It'd be quick and it's quickest and easiest.
Start on Boulevard edition.
Actually, mind your lake bathhouse.
Yeah.
The very top, though. As Mr. Taylor's asking earlier, I've received a text message and a picture on Saturday passed from Joe Segal, who's doing some work up there on another project we'll get to in a second. And it was showing about a foot of snow on the ground. Having talked to Gil Ramirez previous week, he was saying that the snow was gone, but we had a foot of mud on the ground. So, until that's gone, there's not going to be a whole lot we can do yet up behind the lake. Things that need to be done up there at the bathhouse, the RV station needs to be completed, the interior plumbing needs to be completed, the hookups and the testing and the propane tank installed, which I'm not sure the propane tank is on us or if it's on Mr. Monica, but we'll get to that. Purgatory River Bridge, as you may have noticed, construction is back on. We had forty-seven yards of comping poured last Thursday or Friday for the riverwalk. We go down from the riverwalk on this side to the bridge abutment. Contractor is supposed to start on Monday on the other side, it's not done yet, uh, excuse me, it's not done yet, yet so far, but he will be getting that. We do have some dirts in place for the compaction for the dirt on the other side, so we're moving forward there. All it really remains is on this side is the rail. And Topar Building is in charge of that and they can notify if they're free to go and free to get in there. The downtown restroom building, the building itself is installed, that's why it says a hundred percent there. As you get further down, we'll talk about the site improvements that we had some news on today. I'll fill you in on it. Old Sopers Trail Boulevard, this is the Old Sopers Trail deal, we're waiting for concurrence. We're not waiting for concurrence, excuse me, we got concurrence from the state. So, we're good to go there, we're just waiting for final papers to get received from the state so we can give it to the contractor and get them to sign. Sooner that happens, we'll do that. Tennis court resurfacing obviously is finished. We put nets up the other day, in the last two weeks, nets are up.
May I say, I was out today and looked, and it looks really good. And I mean, it looks really good out.
We almost lost one public works guy because he was holding on to the net when the ring came along and whether or not he was the size holes in that net, it took him off the ground. We won't go there. He happened to be close to a much larger public works guy who. We do have a few more things on the bottom of the net, we're going to, we added another cable around the bottom to hook the net to hold it, keep it from flapping in the rain, so that'll constern you. So, we're slip lining, obviously, Mr. Valentine talked about that. The lower level remodel is complete finally, after almost eighteen months, we won't go there. Under budget, which is kind of interesting, it was under budget in the fact that it was equal to what the original contract was. We had a few more things putting over that budget line, but with, at that point, it was, I was going to just get Ms. Navret whatever Ms. Navret wanted because Ms. Navret signs my checks and so I want to make sure, keep her happy. So, we did add some extra things. I was in contact with the bonding company this morning actually and telling them that we're finished and trying to make sure that everything's leveled out, finished there. Restroom site improvements, this is for the Elm Street restroom we were just talking about. This is, had been on delay and on hold because some issues with the contractor and subcontractor plumber that he get hired and the way they put the building down without having the plumbing inspected. The plumbing inspector did not like that, so he put a stop work order on the project. As of this morning about eleven AM, the state plumbing inspector called me and said that he had just talked to the plumber and they had worked out a plan, they should be down Thursday or Friday the latest to test the facility and if it passes, he will remove the stop work order to convert it to be completed. Sandy Trail Water Main, Mr. Valentine talked about that. The two eighteen East Main Vault, that was the vault in front of Rodney Woods' place over here where the sidewalk was part of, should have been part of the historic blue project, but because of the vault underneath, we took it out because CDOT doesn't want to mess with historic places. So, we got that fixed and it got to be quite the project as we got into it and saw what the building was sitting on, what it wasn't sitting on. That was done, it was in and out pretty quick.
Can I ask you a question? So, CDOT is still involved with that Main Street? Are they still having the say on what happens? Because you mentioned C.
Well, that was a, it was a CDOT project, the Main Street Historic Blue Project was a CDOT project. And that's the only way it was.
Okay, thanks.
Noah's Ark Building, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with everyone concerned. Try to get some plan redesigned, questions answered. We had twenty-eight questions that we went through the other day, contractor and I submitted those to the architect and they were most gracious to get them answered real quick and, you know, back to us and we're hoping to get everything going. We have, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'll ask you.
We have things removed from the site. The only thing we have, we have left out there is we have one conex building we need to get rid of, but that's not going to be in the way for quite a while until we get to.
There was a couple gentlemen out there yesterday or Friday, I don't know, I don't think they were city lookers, but they were standing out there looking, I don't know.
Uh, there's been several, there's been CCOM, there's been, because we have a CCOM line we have to move for a power plant because now it comes from the back across the front pool over to the power plant. We're going to change this over around the back. Comes up.
That's probably, yeah.
Probably what they were two gentlemen there.
Yeah.
That old wooden structure in the back of what's going to be the new Noah's Ark?
I won't, I won't mention any names, Mr. Valentine may have, we're working on that one too. We're trying, he's already had the power line guys come out and remove motors, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, we're now, the motor's taken off. We're, it's, even if we're to fire, sorry. Even if we're to fire up the plant again, we'd have to rebuild that. That needs to come down and we're, we're working through that, so we started.
You should try and sell that wood.
Yeah, I'd like to, but that is the old style pressure treated wood that has.
The landfill.
The landfill isn't even, the landfill isn't even like it. So, we've got to decide how we get rid of it. It looks like old barn wood, it'd be really cool to use.
Yeah.
No, we don't want to use that.
Okay.
On your street, I bet.
Are all the bonds in place for PBC or Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, she's ready to go, they're waiting for a notice to proceed. We're waiting to give them a notice to proceed until we got the plans that we have in hand now and that's what we have questions on. I'm hoping to give them a notice to proceed tomorrow, obviously. Anything else, Noah's Ark? Church Street ADA improvements, that is Church Street right up from the building here. It's the south side of the street, we've been working on it for quite a while. It was the infamous part that was shown on local TV for several times. That was designed in-house by one of our engineering guys and he did a great job on it. With everything else that's been going on, we just have not had a chance to review it all because we've been trying to get, sit down in one place to do it and to get it out in the day because it is pretty much ready to go.
Thank you for pulling that hole right there by one on Church Street.
Oh, and further down, yeah, that's not part of this, that was good too. Side of the riverwalk, side record repairs, it is what it is. We had some utility cuts down the riverwalk to fix. Of course, the Tika statue base was the Tika's base, the statue in the coal miner memorial on Main Street we did last year and just got that in and out of, a quick and easy project actually.
What happened there, I mean, that thing was brand new.
There was no base for it.
No, yeah, there was no base, we had a new base, you know, we went in and excavated a hole in the, where the miners.
Concrete base.
Concrete base and then come up with stucco and that and then put the plaques in and then mounted the statue on top.
Oh, okay.
Fire department and library parking lot paving, those were done last year. ADA curb cut phase one, that was some of the curb cuts around town we've done, mostly at the schools. We did a lot over by the high school, there's some up at Eckhart. We still have Chestnut and Second Street to do, but because of the water line, we didn't want to go in there and tear things up and have to tear it back up and then tear it back up to tear it up again. So, we're waiting until the sewer line, water line's done, we're going to do the curb cuts after that, finish that part. Parking lot drainage at Public Works, that is what it is. It's the, we have to get the water out from in front of the garage area out there and taking it out the back where we knocked down the old house, the old Lizzo home and out, straight out the back and down the hill property that we own. In order to do that, we had to design a drainage system to do that first. In order to do that, we had to design a drainage system to do that first. So we've got that accomplished, and we'll pave up the fence, move the salt shed from out of Public Works, the swimming pool. We already have that done, we'll talk about it in a second.
I talked to Greg, and I think he talked to you about the Guzzos, they, they talked to me about the issue with all the lights in the morning and all that stuff.
We've talked about it, yes.
And you know that type of fence that we've seen.
Slats.
Well, not the slats, that, it's actually material that you could put there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And that would probably be better than the slats.
Well, the slats are, it's still not, it's gonna be very high, though.
Right. What they were complaining about was that when the guys turned their vehicles on early in the morning when they're working there, it shows right into their bedroom.
We can certainly address that, that's for sure. So the parking lot drainage is designed, we just need to get some other things in a row before we start that. South Anamos curb and gutter, that's up here on the second block of South Anamos Street, where we've been tearing the curb and gutter, the gutter was gone basically. One of the homeowners wanted to do a sidewalk, but she couldn't do her sidewalk without having the curb and gutter fixed, so we did that entire section up there. And we're still waiting for one of the homeowners now to get ahold of a plumber, which we told him, gave him names and that, of the plumbers, and they need to replace the curb stop as Mr. Valentine requires, the water department requires, when we do something like that. The curb stop is infected, so they wanted to put a new curb stop in, they just haven't done that. We have, I think, eight feet of curb and gutter to finish. We're being held up by homeowner. Playground resurfacing, I hope you pulled at least one out and walked onto the resurf- it's like walking on the moon or something. Especially when it's warm, because it gets a little softer when it's warmer. Really nice, but it's kind of strange. But it has definitely been noticed by many people, many of the kids, many of the parents and that, I've said they did it. Plus it cleans off the smell. Central Park grandstand replacement, we've talked to our engineers, trying to get a scope of work for design. The engineers are also working into GOCO brands, Outdoors Colorado, Great Outdoors Colorado, to help us out with this. The one million dollars that we have allocated in the capital improvement budget is not, not the way we want it. We'll get some money from GOCO and go from there. They are working on that, I was talking to that gentleman, actually, I believe it was either Friday or Monday, but I think it was Monday.
You're showing the spring of twenty twenty. Now, is that going to, that, it depends what, well, the spring, March, because I'm not sure how many months it's gonna take.
Right, it's gonna take a while.
So it's gonna interfere with all the baseball seasons and all that stuff, so.
And the teams have been not formally notified, we're gonna work on that, notify everybody once we get some concrete dates and start dates and stuff. They know it's coming, they've all been contacted, at least informed, you know, we're gonna do this. Sewer port repairs, of course, bath house sidewalks and parking, that's up at Monument Lake. We need to put part of the project, this is not part of the project, this is ADA sidewalks and parking spaces around the new bath house. And we're waiting for the bath house to sit basically for a year, which is gonna be about eight months here, settle down a little bit, and then put the sidewalks and parking area up against it. We don't want to dial into, we cannot dial into the bottom of the bath house because we crack it because it's a post-tensioned building, we don't want to do that, so it's just gonna settle and work in. That was Mr. Siegel, who sent me the picture last Saturday. He was getting ready to haul dirt from haul class six up there for Phil, and he said, I can't do this. And I thought, well, that's, I kind of figured that, but he was anxious to get started, so we had to head back home. ADA flatwork at parks, you may have seen some concrete being poured at Central Park and at Kit Carson that's broken, picking tables and picnic shelter type grills, not shelters, I don't say that. At several parks, and we have to do an ADA compliant surface and provide ADA tables, that's what this is all about. It's part of our ADA settlement. ADA plumbing repairs is the same thing, it's still part of our plumbing requirements for the ADA. Includes the library, the aquatic center, senior center, Central Park, main bathrooms, something else I can't think of. Those are underway, we do have a contractor, he started actually working at the library the other day. We've come up with a kind of an easier fix than what we thought we would, once he tore the wall open and we got a good look inside, see what was more on. The salt shed slab, say that five times to ask. That's for the salt, for the street and bridge out of the out Guzzo building, that's, has been awarded. The gentleman was in my office Monday, yesterday morning, signed the paper, so he should be starting that construction there as soon as that is poured, we'll remove the block and the sand from the swimming pool site, clear that out.
How much, when they load the salt up, how much dust does that kick off?
I would say some, I couldn't really.
The reason why I bring that up is that was another question, because the Guzzos were aware of it, just going to go in there wondering about that. You know, because it wouldn't load in that direction.
Well, we bought a new cover, so there is a new cover that will go over top of the shed. So that'll help reduce quite a bit of it, I don't know if it won't, certainly won't reduce all of it by any means, but it should reduce some of it. Commercial Street sidewalk, that is part of when they tore the south commercial street there on two hundred block by Knights of Columbus, we had a huge gaping hole. We ended up having to put a new storm drain inlet outlet into the arroyo. And doing that, we're standing and looking at the sidewalk, thinking that it's impassive. I mean, even for someone with normal ability, someone with a disability would never make it down that street. So we're gonna make that compliant from the new, from the old inlet, which is about twenty feet north of the new inlet, third corner, put ADA ramps and everything, so that's out forbid at the moment. Skate park, skate park concrete repair, some damage with just wear and tear, mostly ice and freezing. That skate park has caused some spalling and it's cracking, we're gonna, we're gonna replace some of that. So the kids aren't riding down the side of the city hall out here. And the ones at the bottom there, the unnumbered ones, the landfill closure costs, we're working on that. That's, took a survey that was just completed, and the map was just sent this morning. For determining how much change has come since the last survey was done, which is about six years ago. That'll give them an idea of how much we've filled certain areas of the landfill to determine what materials and how many, much materials we need to for closure of those. We're always working on the ADA settlement, as you can see with the projects listed above.
Just a moment, has, because of all of the stuff that's been going in the landfill originally, a couple of years ago, they thought that we had like thirty years left. Do you know what, have they looked at the?
That's what this is for, that's what this report is for, it's, it's probably not changed much, it's probably the twenty-seven years or twenty-eight years it was.
I was just wondering, because of the landfill, because so much stuff has gone in, are there was reducing that time?
No, it really hasn't because of the lessening of the stuff coming from the oil and gas. There have been, you know, we used to have five or six trucks a day coming from oil and gas, and that's not the case. It's maybe five or six a week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, has there been any conversation or something like, with helping our employee out there as far as burying the trash before that gentleman gets off? I mean, it's pretty, I brought this up before, a lot of people go in at three o'clock or ten after three, and the gentleman works out there, that it's hard for him to get the trash covered in a half an hour. And that's one state regulation that we have to abide by, because if that trash isn't covered with six inches of dirt,
Correct.
we're gonna get, we're gonna get a lot of hot water again. So I don't know if that was ever a thing.
As a matter of fact, it is an ongoing effort, just, we've been working, the guys at the landfill have been working with Public Works this week, removing the soil from the south side as they're redoing the south side fields. So we're repayment, those guys are gonna be out helping us with landfill tomorrow. That's, we've been back and forth several times like that, where they've been out helping cover and keep stuff onsite and being able to do that.
That's all I'm saying, because it's pretty hard for that gentleman to go ahead and cover a whole bunch of trash in a half hour of time, you know what I'm saying? And that's why we get our fine, because the trash will. Thank you.
It seems to me that might be more of perhaps a scheduling issue. Either shut down the time where people can bring things in, which is inconvenient to customers.
Right.
Or adjust the work schedule for them to later start timing.
Under normal, under normal circumstances, the general public is shut off, I believe, at two thirty.
Okay.
The only persons that are out, allowed in are compacted.
Understood.
Commercial public.
But to Mr. Valano's point, it would seem to me if we had either stopped entry sooner or, or longer.
And that's been a lot of our concern.
Well, I've just heard from some contractors out there that it's challenging when we're closed on certain holidays where they're not closed, say for instance like Martin Luther King Day or Columbus Day. Normal holidays that other, the private sector isn't closed, but yet we are closed, so they have issues with getting in. Now, I know the commercial entities like the haulers, they are actually allowed to get in there earlier, but for other people who may have construction materials that they need to dispose of, they can't.
We do allow, you're correctly saying that we allow commercial haulers to dump one time during those holidays that are closed. Usually around nine o'clock in the morning. The gatekeepers and the guys out there, talk to them, find out what time should be best for them, and then maybe they're out there and then dump that one time during the holiday. That's just four.
It costs us a lot, anyways, work on holidays. It would be a thing like, you could dump on holiday when you want, but it'll cost you experience.
Well, is there a way that we could, well, one, if we could either put out a PSA, you know, stating to all of our commercial contractors out there, we do have, you know, refuge and such from their projects, that you say, hey, we're gonna be closed on this day. We're sorry for the inconvenience, but we want you to be aware, so you're not doing something maybe previously, the night before, you're gonna bring it in at seven AM, like, when we open. And then they get there and their trailer's full, and they bring their trailer later for other work.
Those days are listed, they're listed on the website, there's a calendar that shows the days we're open, the days we're closed. It's posted the first of the year, and they're available online, available, I believe the guys have the potential to bring it off, to bring it out. Next, and that floodplains regulations, as you know, Mr. Mayor, seeing a couple of different things. They've completely revamped the maps from nineteen seventy-nine, the time they got around to it in nineteen, twenty nineteen, what, three, four, and some years later. They redone all the maps, we need to adopt those, they still need to get those in front of you for your approval. They told us at first that there would be, everything would be digital, there would be no maps like there were. So what do I get in the mail the other day? A whole stack of maps. They're kind of nice, but they're still, it's much better online, you can put in your address online, or AN address in PIT, and it'll bring you right up as to what floodplain you're in, if it's hundred year, five hundred year increase or decrease from previous web maps or whatever, so it's handy. And landfill compliance, working with them, you know, we, now they're coming out with new training requirements. At first, they were gonna have even temporary help, had to submit to training requirements. Well, there was enough kickback and pushback from the rest of the state that they decided, well, okay, we don't need temporary requirements. They're gonna actually require truck drivers bringing commercial loads in, to be trained. So that's, that's the oversight of secret page, you pardon that. ADA picnic tables and grills, that's part of the flatwork, we've got a bunch of new picnic tables we bought. And we're ready to put those out, so we'll have nice new stuff in the summer. The tables that are currently in Kit Carson and Central, we're gonna stockpile for Trinidadian type events. So we have a huge pile of stuff, we won't be going dragging them off from one place and bringing them to another. It'll be much easier to wear everything. Shade sale replacement, everybody's noticed that the shade sales over Chino have kind of disappeared, and now they're gone for sure because we took them down, the ones remaining, there were a couple flapping in the breeze, so those are ordered, they're on their way. They should be shortly. Mic racks, we've installed five of seven, there's one right out and one there I can see. We have two more to put in, terms of dispersing around town, it's the most beneficial place for everybody. High and Main Street is another project we've started working on, but we may end up, as Mr. Valentine and Greg and I have talked before about the street improvements in Main Street stops at Anamos. From here down to the Sonic or Tim Tire Shop, but it's still the old school. So we may incorporate High and Main Street ADA improvements into that whole section and do the whole thing. We're still working on that.
I have a question regarding that. If that were to be accomplished, would we be able to implement arc lights further down the way?
Oh, we do the period lights, like we have, that's what you mean, yeah, that'd be definite.
Okay.
That's a, that's, yeah, that'd be number one problem.
So what that means, it's been brought to my attention from some of the people that are on that portion of West Main, maybe we could put some more lights on if there's any trees in there at all, I don't think they're.
We have to plant trees.
Right, but if we planted some trees, maybe we could put some electricity in there for lights, and continue on that aesthetic. Okay, great, thank you.
From item six, ADA picnic tables, those tables that are long down by the river, down here, are they gonna be replaced?
Those were not part of this project, no.
The reason why I bring up, two reasons, but the main reason, a couple of years ago when there was, there was a lot, when they were released and a lot of water, I think they were, the water was very close to the picnic tables.
Right.
And someone mentioned to me that time, that maybe the table should be moved up to the top where the drain is closer by there.
What brought, what brought the picnic table replacement was the DOJ settlement. These were specific places that were listed in the settlement that said, you know, you must supply so many tables, seating, as at Kit Carson.
You might want to look at those, especially this here with the water content that we have, I'm not sure, kind of released, they're gonna give us some of the atmosphere, we all know.
Who knows? One number from the change of all that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are all written, do we have any consent to speak?
We don't have anything.
I do have a couple of letters that I do want to read that we received, and actually part. See, thanks for all your help, and it says, your thoughtful consideration on water restrictions for the summer ahead is appreciated. Thank you, Robert Arco. And it says, thank you for returning to Level One Water Restrictions as noted in today's practical news on page two. So he's thankful that we're receiving that. Have a letter from the local government, let's see. Designes in Colorado, your local government designes, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is looking forward to working with you and your local representatives as we implement SB 19-181. We're planning to kick off meeting on May fifteenth through twenty nineteen to discuss the process. The meeting will be held here in the COGCC's office or available remotely by Zoom webinar. We'll be sending invitations out soon. Until then, we would like to get a sense of what questions or concerns you may have regarding SB 19-181. In addition, we would also like to get a feel about your current oil and gas sitting regulations and thoughts about potential future local regulations. At your convenience, please forward your COGCC any questions, comments, or information to mark.morton, M-O-R-T-O-N, state.co.us. Thank you, Jeff Robbins, who's the director, so if anybody has any. What I'll probably do is I'll give this to, did everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys have the address. Then I have a letter here, which is a little lengthy, it's right for it, but I'll actually probably read it. April fifth, twenty nineteen, Senate Bill SB 181 and Senate Trinidad Resolution on the Matter. Addresses all of council. Dear Mayor and council members, I'm taking this opportunity to express my sincere opinion concerning the oil and gas industry and its total lack of ethics. I worked for ExxonMobil at the Beaumont, Texas refinery for almost thirty-five years. I have seen and heard how they lie, mislead, and manipulate communities to further their business advantage. ExxonMobil was started and owned by Rockefeller, who I pray the people of Trinidad know and remember intimately. I hope each of you saw the refineries in the Houston area on fire this past week, burning huge smoke plumes of benzene and known carcinogen. There was no benign wood fire. These same refineries add another four tons of hydrocarbon emissions into our atmosphere twenty-four seven. I was on the Workmen's Committee, abiding in the Senate Reg, negotiations with corporate leaders for many years. We asked informally numerous times if there was benzene in the refinery and where it was located. The corporation lied repeatedly, stated that there was no benzene anywhere in the refinery. Finally, in nineteen eighty-seven, a unit fire exploded benzene, benzene in the refinery, and that workers had been repeatedly exposed to it. The company had fifty-five gallon drums of kerosene, which is actually a hundred percent benzene to clean our tools and even to wash work clothes in. The old companies told us this was a benign solvent. This practice had gone on for generations before I came to work there in nineteen seventy-one. I personally lost several good friends of my father's generation to blood cancers. Now my generation is dying. Benzene again causes blood cancers, cancers, and there's no safe level. So essentially, the corporation murdered my friends. My lawyer has a deposition from the corporation stating that since, that since nineteen fifty-two, they are aware of the lethal damage benzene took on its workers. I have been diagnosed with CLL and Don Hodgkin's lymphoma as a result of this exposure. If the city chooses to become the tool of these oil companies, Colorado will end up exactly like Texas. The oil companies in Texas and located in Colorado too, have a Texas legislature passed a law stating a worker cannot sue the company until his death. I pray you do not choose to be a weapon of the oil company, but choose to defend your community. Trinidad is a beautiful town. When you consider the Colorado oil and gas community, think about each well, each tank and vessel, each bump, each plank, each flange leaks, each flange leaks, hydrocarbons into your beautiful air twenty-four seven. This is not good for your citizens, certainly isn't good for the environment and global warming. Those of you with bad children should consider this. These companies scare their workers by telling them they will lose their jobs if they don't pressure law, makers and representatives and people to do what the company wants. That is one reason the union was, was formed, so as to give workers a safe voice without fear of the company. When these non-union people losing their wits to lump your council chambers, consider most are there because if they aren't, they are afraid for their jobs. Their city does an excellent job protecting us with fine police and fire department and great workers. I again pray you will protect them protected from the bullying tactics of the oil and gas companies. Sincerely, James Harrington. Item five, consent agenda. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of April the second, two thousand nineteen. Item B, appointing the South Leoni to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority, mispronouncing, guess you're still here. Item C, approval of the bills, which amount to two million four hundred seventy-eight thousand seven fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Item D, approval of payroll, April sixth, twenty nineteen to April nineteenth, twenty nineteen. And put the dollar on there, but that is included in that, uh, note through the case. Could I have a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve five A, B, C, and D.
Okay, second?
Second.
Call vote?
Benato?
Yes.
Goodoff?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Minteng?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings, six A, consideration minority authorizing a lease purchase agreement, arrangement with acquisition of a new twenty nineteen freight liner with first lift bucket truck. Hearing is now open. Mike, do you want to give us an invitation? Mr. Sheriff?
If I have. Pass the buck.
So this is, there have been no changes since the first reading. The interest rate is three point eight nine percent, uh, just so that you know, the ladder truck that we purchased last year, the interest rate was three point eight seven, so not much of an increase. We are financing a lot less because there's, uh, well, we have a fifty thousand dollar down payment and we're only financing, two, I mean, one sixty, one sixty-eight, one sixty-eight. I believe books can delivery mid-May.
Correct. So originally it was a hundred and eighty-six that we were financing, now it's gone down to one sixty-eight?
No, um, with interest, it'll be a hundred and eighty-six, yes. The total purchase is two hundred and eighty, yes.
Are we still going, cause you gave us two plans, one was a four-year plan, one was a five-year plan?
Uh, we did choose the four-year.
Any questions? Not for me, no, getting through it, okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to speak for the ordinance or against? Exposed. Item sixty-one, second reading of ordinance, authorizing a lease purchase, acquisition, for the acquisition of a twenty nineteen freight liner with first lift bucket truck. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion for the second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease purchase arrangement for the acquisition of a new twenty nineteen freight liner with first lift bucket truck.
Okay, have a second, second? Any discussion? Any discussion, call vote please?
Benato?
Yes.
Goodoff?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Minteng?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six B, new retail cultivation, cultivation facility application filed by Herbal Garden South LLC at thirty-six twenty Freedom Road. Hearing is now open. Who is here to represent?
Me, Roger.
Okay. Last.
Thank you, Mayor, would you swear him in, please? You changed your last, it's under you when you were here.
A little bit, uh.
Hey, that's my. Thank you, Mayor, good evening, sir. You are Mr. Corenti, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and your, your last name for the record is spelled G U A R E N T I?
No, it's G U A R I E N T I.
That's what I, no, just kidding. No, no, okay, thank you. And sir, you are the managing member of the applicant, which is Herbal Garden South LLC?
Correct.
Okay, and this is an application for a retail marijuana cultivation facility?
Yes, it is.
And the address, the premises, bless you, is it thirty-six twenty Freedom Road in Trinidad? Okay, and Mr. Corenti, I wanna begin by saying, you already have a license in the city of Trinidad, is that correct?
Correct.
A retail marijuana store license, I believe?
Correct.
Known as Herbal Garden, uh, the business Herbal Garden LLC at four thirty-nine North Commercial?
Operating as a, uh, underground station, yes.
Okay, that's the trade name, but the business is Herbal Garden?
Correct.
Okay, and that has, if I'm not mistaken, the exact same ownership structure as this applicant, which is Herbal Garden South LLC, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and so, so we're clear, this being a, um, retail marijuana cultivation facility, is it your request that, that if you're approved, marijuana you would grow here would provide the product for your retail store?
Absolutely.
And also, would you tell council, I believe you have two other licenses, is that correct, that you're operating Colorado?
Um, I have one, uh, the four oh four, operate downtown Pueblo, and then I have the high octane, um, in my, and a grow in a MIPs in Pueblo as well.
Okay, so four additional licenses? Okay, in addition to what you have in Trinidad?
Correct.
Okay, and sir, I, I just wanna ask you, because of your experience and you're having another license, you have a familiarity with the, uh, the retail marijuana codes for Trinidad and the state of Colorado?
Absolutely.
Okay, and it is part of your application, is it, is it correct that you've already been given your conditional license by the state of Colorado?
Correct.
Okay, and if you would please, if you're, well, do you have your certificate of occupancy?
Everything's been signed off, we don't actually have the sheet yet, uh, to us, but everybody's signed off.
Okay, and so, but you don't have your certificate of occupancy quite yet?
Not quite yet.
If approved, and I know you were talking, you and I were talking about this on the phone today, but if approved, when would you like to start operating and being business?
Two to three weeks.
Okay, and, um, I noticed from your application, you talk about a utility impact. Um, so I, I kinda wanna just get right to that. I believe during the summer months, you're, you're planning on using up to ten thousand gallons of water per day?
No, no, that's a month.
A month, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, a month.
And that's for four months during the P D R season?
Yes.
Okay, and there, at least now is no associated indoor grow with us, is that correct? So if approved, it would only be an outdoor grow for four to five months, is that right? Okay, so we're clear, you are the fifty percent owner of Herbal Garden South LLC?
Correct.
Okay, and then John Bowman thirteen percent? Yes?
Yes.
Lance Corenti eleven percent?
Yes.
Dennis Norick eleven percent?
Yes.
Joseph and G ten percent?
Yep.
And Patrick Payes and, or, uh, Hunter Cantona, two point five percent each? Okay, and I believe there, in, in the background checks, the, there are two that have a bit of a criminal history, but those are the, the most minority owners, is that correct?
Right, right.
Okay, so I wanna ask you, and I'm about done, the landlord in this location is TBN LLC?
Correct.
Correct. And you were the principal in that?
Absolutely, yes.
And so the lease is kind of you leasing your company to your company, right? And you signed a lease for both companies?
Right.
Okay, so forty-eight month lease?
Yes.
Okay, and for the amount of consideration, um, in the lease agreement, um, uh, it is ten K a month, I usually don't discuss a, the compensation, but you're absolutely correct. Um, it is, it is, Mayor. So you understand that if you were approved by city council, first of all, you cannot, you can't possess any marijuana, marijuana product, anything to do with marijuana at this location unless and until you have your local Trinidad license, you understand that?
Absolutely.
And, and of course, your other matters at the retail store are independent, but in connection with us, you cannot have any product at that facility unless and until you're approved.
Absolutely.
And until you have your license in hand.
Absolutely.
Okay, another recent issue that, that seems to keep coming up, and that is, you understand, sir, that you are completely responsible for the renewal of your license?
Absolutely.
May seem like an odd question, but, okay, yeah, but if you, if your license expires, your local license, you understand that your operation, even if it's the peak season, you're, you can be suspended, your product can be thrown away?
Just like everywhere else, absolutely.
Okay, so, and you understand your renewal date or your issuing date for the state of Colorado is not going to be the same for the city of Trinidad?
Yeah, that's just like that everywhere.
Okay, but you understand that?
Absolutely.
All right, you understand also that if approved, you are, you absolutely have to continue to comply and cooperate with all municipal officials, the police chief, the fire chief, the city clerk, city manager, city attorney, you have to cooperate with everybody, you understand that?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, and you have, I saw on here, you have, um, a number of, I know you have an operating agreement? I think you, that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, you have a security plan?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you have everything that is required of you per the MED regulations?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, Mayor, council members, I have no further questions.
Any questions, Mr. Corenti?
You seem to be getting real versed into it.
It wasn't intentional, let me tell you that.
No, you, you know what you're doing, it seems.
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of, you know, I own Pub electrics and, um, it kinda got brought into it because somebody defaulted on, uh, some switchgear and light fixture package and mechanical equipment, and it got sucked into it, and now, now we're going full bore.
Okay, you're using three hundred and thirty-three gallons of water a day?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a hell of a lot, less than we're putting on a golf course? That's for the record.
Oh, my gosh.
Now, I have, I have a question.
Um, are you aware of the, uh, the safety structure we have of twenty-five dollars per pound?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
Absolutely.
How many pounds are you predicting?
Um, well, it's only an acre and a half, we're probably looking about a thousand fifteen hundred pounds somewhere in that ballpark. It depends, it depends on weather and grasshoppers and, you know, see whatever, whatever happens. I know in Trinidad, like it's snowing, you know?
I have no current.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Downs didn't touch on it, but it, like last year when we had a water shortage and we went into restrictions, you do understand that the marijuana industry will be the first affected?
Absolutely.
It can be cut off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's all right, I got your back, thank you.
Yeah, that, that's just common sense. That's common sense.
I don't have any questions either, all right, thank you.
Hey, just thank you.
We don't wanna have a lot of high grasshoppers, okay?
All right, guys.
Anyone in the audience to speak for the application? Or against the application? Not, we're exposed. I don't think there is any reason to go into executive session, but have a motion, please, for, yeah, for new drill?
Yes, I, I moved that we approved a retail cultivation facility application filed by Herbal Garden South LLC at thirty-six twenty three North.
Could I have a second, please?
You do.
Second, okay? Any further discussion? Call vote, please?
Benato?
I'm out, gonna stay on this vote, there's a kind of a relationship there.
Goodoff?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Minteng?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Findings?
This matter came on for a hearing on the application of Herbal Garden South LLC at thirty-six twenty Freedom Road in Trinidad, Colorado, for a retail marijuana cultivation facility adoptions. According to city council, the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on April sixteen, twenty nineteen, in the city council chambers and city hall. The city council having reviewed the application and supporting documents, reports of the city clerk and other city staff, evidence of the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. The application is complete and signed by the applicant, and the applicant has paid the appropriate application and license fees. The application appears to be in substantial compliance with all of the requirements of Article eleven, Chapter fourteen of the Trinidad Municipal Code. The applicant has testified to their willingness to comply with any and all areas of said article whereby compliance at this time cannot be fully attained and substantiated. According to the testimony of the applicant, the application does not contain any material misrepresentation. The proposed marijuana business, businesses complied with applicable zoning regulations. The city council hereby finds, based on the testimony of the applicant, the building in which the proposed marijuana business would be located will conform with the Trinidad City Codes, including the zoning code and all international codes adopted by the city. Ron Corenti testified in favor of granting the license, no other person testified in favor of or in opposition to granting the license. The applicant, through the facts and evidence adduced as a city, as a result of the city's investigation and testimony provided, has made a prima facie showing that the applicant owner is of good moral character and any employee with, of his entity will be likewise of good moral character. According to the city clerk's report, there are currently sixty-five medical and retail marijuana licenses overall through, approved within the city of Trinidad, with thirty ownerships and thirty-seven licenses. Based on the evidence presented at the hearing and investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that the location of the business is appropriate and that the applicant owner is of satisfactory moral character and there is a willingness by the applicant to fully cooperate with the officials of the city and the operation of this business. Therefore, the city council and the city of Trinidad, of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, as a local marijuana licensing authority, hereby approves and grants a retail marijuana cultivation facility license at thirty-six twenty Freedom Road in Trinidad, Colorado. The issuance of said license shall be withheld until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the building official and upon absolute confirmation of compliance with all of the codes adopted by the city of Trinidad. The licensee is not permitted to possess product in advance of the license being issued.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, which is, we have unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, eight A. First reading of minority free peeling and reenact in chapter two, administration, Article seventeen, Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics. Setting a public hearing for consideration of said ordinance at six PM on May seventh, twenty nineteen. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I'd be glad to introduce.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Vote.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any other further discussion on it?
No, just said less, you may change if I ask for it, thank you.
Thank you, it was with much assistance, but no, you're so welcome.
And give it closer.
Yeah, no, that's right.
And what that will do for the audience is as to replace the existing Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct, so that's, this complete replacement. Call vote, please?
Benato?
Yes.
Goodoff?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Minteng?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item A B, a natural gas meter purchase, could I have a motion, please?
Vote.
Again, have a second? Okay. Mike?
Sir, um, I don't wanna belabor, we've already discussed what's going on. We need to purchase these gas meters as quickly as possible, they're up to forty weeks out, so we need to get them coming. Um, this is, overall, we have four thousand three hundred and twenty-some, uh, gas meters. This is almost half of them, we're replacing estimated twenty-one, uh, two thousand one hundred fifty-five meters. Uh, there are four different sizes and, uh, because it is a, uh, an American Alster meter that the industry uses now, it's the most accurate, we're going with that and matching what we have currently in our system. We're gonna standardize that. There is only one regional supplier for that, uh, American Alster meter. I couldn't go out to bids, cause they, they maintain this region, so that's Mountain State's piped and supplied. We've done a lot of business over the years with them for various different, uh, plumbing supplies, so. Uh, their quote is two thou, two hundred sixty-seven thousand. Uh, their quote is two thou- two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents.
Any discussion with council? Sounds reasonable.
Very appropriate.
I have no questions.
Lopez, no, sir. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Call vote please?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item A C, resolution approving submission of grant application to Colorado Department of Local Affairs to seek funding for crazy French ranch management study. Could I have a motion please?
I make a motion to approve the resolution approving submission of a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs.
Have a second?
Second.
Greg, do you have anything on that?
I'm not sure of the timing to apply for this grant, but this is a planning grant through, um, Dola and, we have a lot of planning before us in order to make sure that we're appropriately using that land when it gets turned over to a public use. So this helps us get along.
Sure.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this grant going to Dola, what, what is the city seeking at the amount of this grant?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand?
Yes.
So then, the city would be liable for the other half of what, back at Dola?
I don't think, I don't think these grants have a match.
They don't have a match. Okay, once, yeah, keep going.
Sure.
Once this study, uh, this, uh, grant where we try to go through this grant and the survey and stuff like this, who's liable for the insurance for these people to go up there and do their study and, in case somebody falls down and breaks their, their ankle, in case somebody falls down and busts their head open? Is that going to be a liability for the city of Trinidad?
No, Colorado has law.
You say no, but we got to know these factors.
Right.
Colorado has law that protects open public lands.
Colorado has law.
We don't own the property.
We don't own the property.
Anyway, so, but they're working, if they go and do this, they're, they're under our control to go up there and look at this property. No, they're under land for public.
They're independent contractors, best case scenario, and independent contractors generally don't have liability, but there, there are also workers' compensation considerations, if you are a worker, you're injured on the job, Colorado limits you to workers' compensation claims exclusively, so you just make a claim against your employer. But I, it, it's not, how do you get us in a position of, of increased exposure? I can't visualize.
And they are, they are correct, because I remember, uh, when Tara Marshall was here, she and I had that discussion, and we checked into it. At one time years ago, there was an issue, but they changed that about two or three years ago, where, uh, the liability is not there.
If a contractor gets on, whether it be public or private land, it's up to them to file a certificate of insurance to make sure that contractor has insurance.
Well, that's all I wanted to ask, because it's a certain thing that people, sometimes, you know, if I don't know, sometimes I'm going to ask, that's what I get from, from me.
Well, that's for sure. I would ask that question.
Okay.
That's it? Would you go on?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Will this take into effect the visioning process that was conducted by TPL and all?
The visioning process is already being put.
Right, but I mean, they're going to look into that and, and apply those tools, if you will, towards what this?
Definitely.
Okay.
And then they'll be doing more of that.
Great.
Rico?
I'm good too.
Good. Okay. Is it? Any questions, can you call vote please?
Benado?
Oh, you have another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, what was the reason you said this was a good time to, to apply for this, or what was that?
Um, I'm not sure of the, the application deadlines for dollar grades, I gotta check into that, whether this one has a.
That's the only kickback?
Hmm?
That's the only kickback, yeah, right?
Drawback, not kickback.
Just take that from the record, please.
Exactly, that's right.
I'm not a call to, I'm only glad to do it.
I'm just kidding, I'm just trying.
Call vote? A wall vote please?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Council reports. Mr. Benado?
I don't have any.
Goodall?
Um.
Trying to think, I don't have nothing to say.
I'm good.
Okay.
I just know one of them, last Tuesday, I addressed a group called the Pyrean Group, it's a charitable organization, and updated about forty ladies, uh, on what's going on with space to create in the Craig district. They asked a lot of good questions, they're very excited about it. That's my report.
Um, I was fortunate enough to go to the Downtown Colorado's Incorporated, uh, Governor's Dinner with a few other people from Trinidad, including Mr. Sun, to, uh, kind of be there in support for Ms. Tara Marshall, because she was a recipient of, of an accolade there, which was a really great thing for Trinidad, and, and people there in Aspen were talking about Trinidad. The, the people from the tourism board, from the Colorado Tourism Board, and they talked about their trip down to Trinidad for space to create, so, there is an interesting fever pitch, when I was even walking around the town of Aspen, people were saying, well, you're from Trinidad, I've been hearing about this town. So, we're getting a lot of notoriety in other little smaller parks, not just along the I seventy corridor or I twenty-five corridor, but even in other parts that are a little more isolated, which is really nice. Uh, another interesting tidbit is, when we were coming up over Loveland Pass, we picked up a snowboarder who, uh, he, he was, well, we picked him up because he was thumbing, uh, he dropped his truck up at the top of the pass and skied down, well, it's open, he'll do that. And, he was an older gentleman that had just mentioned, oh, I just bought ten properties in Trinidad, that's so weird that you happen to be from there. So, I mean, people are learning about us and they're actually spending money here in town, which I thought was really, um, reinvigorating to, you know, what we had just completed with the Denver, or, I'm sorry, the Downtown Colorado's Incorporated Dinner, and then here we are, a few hours away, and we pick up someone who's starting to get this information and, and putting their money into real estate here, so. Uh, I'd like to say, I, I thank everyone here on this dais and city staff and the community and the boards and commissioners, they're doing a very good job and, uh, I felt pretty proud, and I think we should all feel proud about what we're doing. And that's all I got right now.
This is not really a report, it's a question or a request. I really appreciate that staff sent us the project identification spreadsheet to us, but can we kind of like, is there any way to clear it up or to highlight it, to where, what projects are completed and what are ongoing? There's a lot of projects on there that we abandoned and they're still on there, is there any reason to have that?
The, I, I left those on there because they were cad, due to Tara Marshall, and I wanted to show some sort of.
Okay.
What's happening?
It's not a big deal, but I think when I got onto council, we wanted something like this, just for reference, so, I, and, Mr. Each and Mr. Valentine did a wonderful job tonight. It's more than I ever wanted to know about. No, I, I really appreciate that, because this is, I'm in a, in a learning process, and also, I want to let you know that one of my neighbors, who is a veteran, called me to thank me for the flagpole, and I told him I had absolutely nothing to do with that. So now that I know who's responsible, I will tell them, that there are people out there that appreciate that, and I think you should know that. That's all.
Thank you, my dear. I, uh, had occasion to attend the Arts and Culture second meeting in my career. There are fewer members attending, there were only four this time, but they are a energetic group, rich with ideas. One, for example, they have the idea to replace that blue structure in a roundabout with a galloping horse on a raised pedestal. Like so. There's a, a number of things, they, they're still up on the sunflower ideas, thinking that it would be good to attach them to the walls of the newly constructed restroom at the corner of Elm and, uh, commercials as to provide a character and an artistic venue. The idea with the small and large roses on the steps of city hall, it's not a good idea, but maybe in the garden, as was somebody suggesting, I'll have to decide. Apparently, they've been talking with Rajio about placement of some of his art at the hospital, it's just unbelievable, the number of ideas. I suggested to them that, they, by whose authority are you making all these decisions? And only have artwork that's already paid for and transportation was paid for to get it here to place in city, in Trina Park, raised kind of moving kinetic kites of art. It, it's a huge thing, they had another idea to place two artworks, and I'm not sure exactly what they are, but they refer to them as he-bee, she-bee, and to place those down by the Veterans Memorial across from Trina Park. All of which, and that together with Rajio's style caused me great concern, but be that as it may, there's a lot of ideas, I also have plans for the, the southeast corner of the intersection of Nevada and, set, Dona Basoni. And, and I thought, you may be talking to somebody, and, and I like, and, I gave them this example, all of your ideas are like being poured into a funnel, and we graciously accept all of them, but as the funnel goes to a central point, so do you have to do that. And that, I determined to be, Mr. Sun.
We're working on a lot of.
Well, no, I know that, and I told them, I said, look, you, you have a lot of good ideas, and you want, I want not to dampen that enthusiasm. You see, they, they're going, uh, just, as fast as they can to come up with creative ideas, and I'm thinking, but at the same time, we can't make it look like a garage sale either. You know, it has to have some kind of unity, some kind of theme or consistent organization, but, and again, it has to be consistent with law, ADA requirements and liability issues and snow removal and all those kinds of things that maybe you're not thinking about, that maybe artists don't think about. But anyway, I have asked them to channel their efforts and to meet with Greg or at some point, to, uh, find out what they can do and where they can do it, rather than just assume that the city of Trinidad is a blank canvas on which they can start creating art willy-nilly. And, and I wanted them to understand that limitation, and at the same time, not dampen their enthusiasm. That, that horse is seventeen thousand dollars, not counting the pedestal. And, and I asked them, I said, how do you fund yourself? They have like eighty-four hundred dollars in their account, which is money previously granted to them that is not yet spent, but it's their belief that they're going to add to that in the forthcoming months.
Well, you've, you've allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to boards and commissioners.
Understood.
Have sold that to the rest of the numbers.
They're expecting to pay for this horse, Dusty. And this horse is, uh, let me see. And.
He's in construction already, isn't he?
Yeah, that's, the guy, the guy in the left of the background, I took a picture of the picture, and that's a framework for this horse, and what it's going to be is metal ribbons attached to it to give it dimension. And they had kind of a cool idea, the way it's facing in that previous picture, the horse looks like it's galloping south.
I just want to be your personal focus.
And, and all of the, uh, the, uh, with the movement of the traffic on the by道 going north, it would appear as though the horse is galloping south, and, um, but that's kind of great, I would never have, have that artistic inclination to make that observation, but they did. So, be that as it may, that's what, what's.
It's in the effort of the blue queue.
Uh, to be relocated, perhaps down at the, uh, the, the Dog Park?
Oh.
I have no idea why.
That was very controversial.
I know, but we were going to put a coal car there, but we've definitely determined that it was a malignant car, and, uh, from lead, they're probably into that.
She was too small in the first place for that.
Yeah, well, and then I, I suggested that they may need to talk with C-Dot about, this vision experience and, and that kind of stuff, putting this dimensional horse in the middle of the roundabout.
Actually, in a roundabout, it's good to obscure views, because people look.
Personally, I've never been a big fan of the blue thing, but the horse, I don't think I have a real idea. Just, I personally.
I just can't believe that I'm talking to a hired state patrolman that thinks that it's a good idea to confuse people on the interstate that there's a horse coming toward them. I just.
Well, true, with, with my experience, and, and the people also tells me that there's really nothing where you can do to further confuse people. I'm one of them now, I, I drive down the road on my left signal light. Just because, I do, now look at me. But, and that's all I have important, but the point is, I, I want to temper everything that you told me with the great amount of enthusiasm that these folks have, who, what they're, they truly live their passion, and, and, uh, they're anxious to do things, but it's kind of, you've put them down to a trough of a food out.
Well, you know, you talked about the letter that Greg sent us about the vetting process, a vetting process for public art.
Oh, yeah.
I think maybe it might be a good idea for us to start thinking about that.
I sent that to them.
Okay, yeah, does it make you smile when you look at it or everything? It should, no, no, I agree, I mean, I know, I'm, 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 just.
When we were in, when we were in Aspen, they, they exhibited there by Robert Maplethorne, and I have no respect for his work, because he's the guy that put a crucifix in a bottle of beer.
Oh.
So, I'm just a man of this and this stuff. It's not good.
Well, you know, and this is like many drafts of your work, for example, counselor, it gets better with time. Each, each generation.
Whatever.
Whatever. It's getting deep, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I attended the Southwest Chief Amtrak last Friday, and of course, uh, like I reported the last time, that the United States Department of Transportation, Elaine Chow, uh, and Mr. Anderson have kind of, uh, batted together and, uh, talking about, uh, eliminating long-distance trains across the country, and of course, we had a pretty good discussion on that. And of course, there is some concern, uh, but we're still moving forward with, uh, uh, Tiger nine grant that we received, which is going to, uh, replace and, and do a lot of stuff in the Mexico sector from Lani in that area. We're also going to hire a, an assistant, because we knew we were going to, for Randy Brauburger, Brauberger, as, he's our director, and, uh, so, we'll be hiring somebody to help him, because there's an awful lot of work to be done. Uh, we're also working on revising our Southwest Chief Charter. Today was interesting, I, uh, went to that appellate judge thing that was here in town, and, uh, I listened to one of the, uh, things that they were looking at, and that was, that was interesting, uh, but I, I was not able to listen to the second one, because I had to go over to, uh, listen to Congressman Buck's representatives, I had a couple of items that I wanted to talk to them about, the major ones. I wanted to express our concern, if our legislators, to make sure that he's still on board, uh, in support of our Amtrak position here in Trinidad, so I was there for a while, and then I went back and I sat with him, had lunch, and it was interesting to talk with some of the judges that were there. Tomorrow night, uh, I guess, uh, April the eighteenth, they're having a, seven, seventeen, one, thirty, anyway, they're having a.
Wednesday.
Tomorrow Wednesday, seventeen.
The seventeenth, Thursday's the eighteenth.
Yeah, they're having a biking deal at the Pioneer Room, to get information out about biking and, uh, probably, uh, trails and that type of stuff, so maybe wants to, uh, go to that. With the tourism group as well, uh, the last time that they met, and we meet again tomorrow, uh, they listened to all the grant applications that they have, uh, currently, they have like seventeen thousand dollars, I guess, to give out, uh, grant money to. They need a heck of a lot more money, and I talked aside a little bit about that, and they're probably talking about maybe, maybe having some money that they can move from different buckets over to be able to fill some of these other applications that they have. So tomorrow, they're going to finalize the grant applications, I'm not sure what they're going to do, in excess of that seventeen thousand dollars, I, I really don't know what they're going to do. I attended the open house last week with the, for the autism group, which was interesting, and, uh, talking to a couple of ladies there, and, uh, that was nice to see that that, uh, is up and running, and, you know, the passion that these people have for kids with autism, so that was, that was interesting. And I think that was it.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
So, we had the tourism summit since our last meeting, correct?
Yes.
So that's what I was going to touch on, we, I was there along with, with the others here, I just wanted to, yeah, I, I knew there was some, that's why I started writing stuff down, because otherwise, I'm like, wait, I remember. So, um, we had a great group of people come into town, um. So, um, we had a great group of people come into town, uh, great conversations, everyone is asking lots of questions, how do we do this in our communities, it was amazing. For all the food, people that was there, including the youth club pizza, was amazing food and well-represented, I think everybody was in agreement that it was probably the best food they had received through their, their whole time of doing these kind of things. So I just wanted to touch on how good a job Marty did in, in helping organize all this, and it went off without a hitch, and it was a very good event.
Yeah, it was a good event, I went down that Wednesday, or whenever it was, down to La Ana, and there was no comparison of what we did here to what we did down there, but, uh, I'm like you, talking to some of the people, uh, that were there, the lady from the tourism, I forget her name, I sat with her through the bus tours, and she was very impressed with what we're doing here in Trinidad, so it was, it was good to hear, so.
Yes, it was.
I forgot, I have one last thing, I was excited about, I said earlier, um, the people from the permanent supportive housing outreach program are gonna be doing a toolkit here in Trinidad next week, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, which is gonna be bringing other people from other communities here to learn about permanent supportive housing, it's gonna be held at the Community Center at ten a.m. for a large session, and then on the twenty-fifth, they are going to be doing one-on-one sessions over at the library, uh, I believe that begins at one P.M. So, I'm sorry, it's starting at eight a.m. on Thursday, uh, on the twenty-fifth, so I misspoke, excuse me. Also, they, uh, are going to be doing a tour of Journey Home, which is the Canyon City Permanent Supportive Housing Facility on May seventeenth. Uh, I know some of you have had a bad experience with the one in Denver, I think it still might be a good idea to go to one that was more reflective of a community our size, and it might give you a different, uh, vantage point if you'd like to go, there are some seats available, they'll be leaving around ten thirty a.m. and should be returning around four P.M.
That was when they went?
May seventeenth. Uh, Mr. Sun and I went last June, when they had the grand opening, it was a really nice grand opening, I mean, the people that were there from AMEX, who are some of the bigger supporters that pay for those, tax credits, uh, down to the local affiliates, the nonprofits that were there to help, and then we actually got to tour the facility and meet the people who were living in it. Um, one lady was just so thrilled to have her own place, it, it really shows why you do it, it's not for a quantifiable number or a statistic of why, but when you actually see a person who says, I used to live on the street and now I have a place, and I've had a fresh start, it really kind of brings home as to why this program is, is powerful, productive, and necessary. So anyways, I just wanna put that out there.
I just to let you know, I just recently read a book about Bridge Out of Poverty, and they touched on homelessness, and they have, they have an interesting thought on that.
Did they discuss the Maslow hierarchy at all in that book? The, the needs structure? Maybe you could, uh, email me that author and the book title and.
It's called, um, Bridge Out of Poverty.
Bridge Out of Poverty. Thank you.
Mr. Sun. Um, there's been a couple identified needs for holding work sessions in the near future, one of them is consumption clubs, another one is amendments, possible amendments to the charter. Some of these probably could be ones that we can hold at five o'clock before the meeting, if there's ones that you would like to discuss that you think need more time than that, we can either start earlier or schedule a different day. So if you have ideas for work sessions, please get ahold of me and let me know how much time you would like to dedicate to that subject. Um, we are in the process of buying some additional vehicles, four of those are police vehicles, uh, this time, we're buying them through GSA, so, uh, that's already a big amount. The reason we're buying four is they were authorized to buy two last year, and by the time they got around to buying them, there weren't any left. So, uh, that's why we're buying four this year, it's, it's a, the actual year of a catch-up. The Comcast Care Days is May fourth, starts in Trino Park in the morning for breakfast burritos, so if you feel like going and picking up stuff, please do so. We, uh, we did a lot of that with city employees a week or two ago, and there's still all sorts of need out there, so.
And Mario burritos, by the way.
The Arbor Day is gonna be, uh, April twenty-sixth, we're holding it at City Hall, and what we're hoping to do this year is plant a tree to eventually replace the big tree that is starting to show its age. The guys who hung the lights up there this last year said, you can really tell that it's not doing so well. So, uh, the best time to plant a tree is twenty-five years ago, so we're gonna start. And then I just want, as it was meant, as the mayor read the letter, the Senate Bill one eighty-one passed, so I just wanted to mention that. I also went to the meeting this morning with staff of Senator, or, excuse me, Representative Buck, and while I was in Aspen, one of the things that we listened to was a presentation about, um, what's gonna happen in the future when we start going towards G five or, um, cell phones and that kind of stuff, the antennas have to be considerably closer together than they are with four G, like every three hundred feet. And one of the things I said is, we can change our design standards to make sure that we don't end up with a porcupine-looking street with antennas everywhere, if we do it before they start. So I, uh, I met some guys from an engineering firm that are very into this, and maybe it would be prudent to help to have them help us design some standards for these things, instead of allowing the cellphone companies to put them up, because once they start doing it, you're out of luck, you can't control them anymore. So it's a good thing we get ahead of it, that's all.
I'm still trying to understand the G five aspect of this whole thing, and it's kind of.
It deals with like AI, so we have self-driving cars, it's gonna be able to produce that capability, uh, the new technology that's coming out, because I was listening to it on a, a radio show the other day, and, um, I know the president right now is really trying to promote it, um, for five G technology, whatever.
The way to think about it is, right now, you can maybe get up to like twenty-five meg on your phone, really good day. With G five, you go up to a thousand meg, so it's from twenty-five to a thousand.
Well, maybe by the time they completely implement it, all retired completely, I'll throw away all the gadgets.
Yeah.
Move to Alaska and, you know.
Paying for gold.
Really.
Go on the grid.
That all, it's very idealistic, but it's really hard to do. Get it.
Nice. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, I just wanted to tell you that they had Ask a Lawyer Day today, and it was a wonderful event, it was very well-attended, there were a lot of people who had questions, four lawyers participated, uh, myself and three others, Bart Chapman, Pam Nelson, your municipal court judge, and Mark Yehu. And we had basically a full dance card for the entire time, so it was a, it was a wonderful event, and I just wanted to let you know that. Um, lastly, I just think that Mr. Valentine and Beach would have to wear a jacket and tie, because I think if they did, they would just be quicker. No, I'm just.
I'm just kidding, very little.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be funny again, you know, that, so, that's all I have.
You said you asked, had that Ask a Journey Day, well, I was looking to ask the, the, the judges a question, and I sat and lectured them.
Yeah, nice.
Had a discussion about, uh, call law marriage, that was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Is there something we need to, to know, Mayor?
The only, the only thing he said is that if, like a lot of people say, that if, uh, people buy, let's say, a vehicle together, or if that doesn't count.
Well, it counts, it's a sign that you look at, but it cannot be disproved.
It's not, it's not a major thing, if that is, two people are living together and they keep saying they're married, they're married, they're married, that's when it really ties in.
That's kind of a slam dunk, but there's a lot of.
Or you're filing your taxes.
Yeah, filing taxes.
Right, but it's never that easy, I mean, that really is a sign of, it's usually like, you know, but yeah, I'm glad you were out.
I was curious, does anyone ever, I'm asking for a friend? I hear that a lot.
Do you? So you don't know who that friend is? Well, I, I don't know.
I do a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Call vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Everybody says hi. Go.